All right. We'll call the special meeting in Kenny County groundwater to order. Uh, we have Director Shaw, Director Bland, Director Robinson and Director Ward in attendance. Director Palmer and Director Millie are not, are absent. Now, if anyone will please rise from any pleasant的位置.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. No public comment, I assume? Okay. Now, let's go right on to item five, discussion possible action approval, purchase assignments, well equipment and monitoring. Mr. Burton? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I have one question. Is a thousand feet enough?
Sorry, say that again?
Uh, what we were looking at was a thousand feet, was it not? On the, on the larder?
That's correct. Oh, yeah. And so Director Robinson, you're looking at, this would be, let me pull this up. This is on the invoice related to the well depth and well casing indicator. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's a thousand feet. And what that instrument is, is that detects casing and gives me a, an indication of the total well depth. And as you all know, some of the, some of the issues we've had about whether or not these are case or not, and whether or not the total depth of it. So this is an instrument very similar to a well sounder that we use that indicates depth of water, where the water table is. But this will give us a casing indicator and a total detection of depth.
It is.
And it's a thousand foot, it's a thousand foot unit.
My question is, is a thousand foot long enough?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. For all practical purposes, yes. If it's more than a thousand feet, we know it's in the Edwards. Um, and I, and I think anything larger than that's going to be tough to use. If my recommendation, if you wanted to do something more than a thousand, my recommendation would be to do something around 500 and then maybe a 1500 or something. But to use a 1500 foot everywhere, it's, it's a little cumbersome and I don't think we'd need one that, that long.
I would, I was, I was only, it was only out of curiosity that I asked. I know that of all the well logs that I've looked at throughout Kenny County, there aren't that many that are over that depth anyway. That I've found. I know there are some.
Right.
Uh, and I just, it was just a question, but the cumbersome part of it, I can see that for sure. Uh, when you start, the longer it gets, the more, the more cumbersome it's going to be using it. Especially if it had 1500 or, or 2000 foot on it.
Yeah, that's.
There's kind of be a lot of weight.
That's exactly. The, the latter part of this discussion, when we get into the monitoring stuff, we can talk about what, what we can invade it for some of the deeper wells, um, on some of the monitoring stuff. But for this particular instrument, I think a thousand feet is sufficient.
And that's, um, what else can you tell us about that instrument as far as what it, what it provides and what it does?
Okay. So on the, so on the Soloness, so what we have in-house right now is a, is an E, it's a, um, it's a well on, uh, I mean, excuse me, it's a well sounder that just gives us water. What this particular instrument does, you can drop it down in the well. And if there's a, if there's any casing, if it's steel or if it's slotted casing at all, it will give you an indication. So it beeps when you go down. Now, I've used this, this is what we used in Middle Pecos and Ty and I have used it on several wells up, up in Fort Stockton and out of the Fort Stockton area. But what it does, it beeps as you go down. So if all of a sudden you get to an open hole, it'll stop beeping. And then when the, when the unit hits the bottom, it provides a constant sound. So there's a, just a tone that rings when it's re, when, when the plunger hits the bottom.
Now, when you say, when you say open hole, do you mean no water? Or do you mean?
No, no casing at all. So.
Okay, got you.
Was that we, here in Kenny, where we've gone down and I've got a 500 foot borehole camera sitting in your vaults over there. But we've gone down and just looked at the casing and it's open rock and limestone. And obviously, you know, you get more solutionized caverns and you get, um, some collapsing of the hole on some of those older wells. And if it's not being used as a production well, it's not case. And so that, that, um, that influences a lot. When we get a water level and if it's got solid steel casing down to 500 feet, but water level is, is 20 feet below the surface, we know that that water coming into that well is coming down from 500 feet. And so it's a good thing to know and to understand that if you drop this unit down and it's providing a solid steel casing all the way down to 500 feet, I know that water for that well is coming from within 500 feet as opposed to having an open hole where water could be coming in at any location. And so we're not giving a real indication of where the, where the head pressure is in the aquifer in that one particular location, if it's an open hole. And this instrument is just another tool in the toolbox to help us make that determination in the field.
Kind of dumbing this down to layman's terms and, and someone that was here. As opposed to what we were doing 25 years ago, when we were doing the existing historic use permitting. And no one, people had bought these properties, the wells had been finished, nobody knew what they were cased to, how deep they were, anything else, because they'd never pulled them. They never had reason to pull them. We'll have an instrument that we can go in and find out what they're finished, what they're cased down to and what they're finished, what formations are finished in with an instrument like this.
Right. And, and you know what, Director Robinson, you hit the nail on the head. Is that a lot of the issues that we're facing, we just don't know a lot about these wells. Yet the questions were being asked, and I know this was brought up in last month in the meeting, you know, what's connected to what? And, you know, and hey, is this just giving me the four wells that are having the most influence on the spring or the most influence on each other? And without really understanding that profile, we can talk about this more on the next item or in the latter part of this one. But really understanding that and understanding that hydraulic connectivity between each of the aquifers or each of the locations and potentially each of the aquifers, this will provide, um, some assistance in order to do that. This will help clarify a lot based on some uncertainty on each of these well locations.
Right. And the fact that some of them have logs, some of them don't have logs. And some of them are very, very old logs. Or may have been, or may have been reworked and we don't have any information on that. Okay. What else you got for us on that? That, that was just my question on, the one I was looking at.
All, all, any other questions or you want me to keep going on this list or?
Uh, go ahead and go through the list.
Okay. Well, the other, the other items that are on this list, the Off Control 200, that's a product by Institute. That's also something that we use on, on other projects. Um, I keep referencing, uh, Middle Pecos because that's the easy one. I know there's been a lot of discussion between the difference between us and them, et cetera. But the Off Control 200 is very similar to the instrument that we're using here in Kenny, except this provides another, another level, another parameter that's being, uh, collected. And this is electrical conductivity or EC. There's a conversion to TDS that provides some density of the water also. And so some of the sulfur waters come up, you know, we've had a lot of sulfur water being pumped out of the, um, deep, deep Edwards. Um, some density stuff will help us there. But the real thing is the electrical conductivity, um, that, that is provided with this instrument. And I made a recommendation that we buy five. Um, I think we could strategically locate that, uh, locate those in certain places, one, one place in particular. And the good thing about this unit, it is just seamless. It integrates into our existing system of what we're using now. I'd like to replace the pressure transducer that's measuring temperature and pressure or depth, if you will, at the, for Lost Morris and put, put an Off Control in there. We can also measure the electrical conductivity and get some sense of the, of the mineral content of the water. Again, there's some, um, there's some TDS and salinity, uh, correlations that you can do. But the density also put that in Lost Morris Springs and then start to, um, start to pull with the geochimical signatures that we've done, but start to pull more of, more records, if you will. So instead of doing a, you know, one or two geochimical, um, tests per year, this will actually record it every hour. And so when you see rain events, do you, do you see a real change in the salt content of the water rapidly? Is it not rapidly? And then again, the recommendation to buy five, we'll deploy five of them out there at strategic locations, like hourly records for electrical conductivity. And just see, are there correlations? Are there things that make sense? Is this one similar to that one? And it, and I do think it's a, it, it's a step in the right direction for gaining additional information that can help us, uh, answer some of the questions that were being asked.
So we're talking about a transducer that does a lot more.
Yeah. And it's more expensive. I mean, the other ones are.
Oh, yeah.
You know, 1,200, ones are 2,000. So.
Yeah. More instrumentation, they're, they're going to run the price up. That's the way that goes.
Yeah. Uh, the, the view links are, that's just the same. We just want to have some extra view links in the, um, in the vault. And the recommendation to buy four rain, rain gauges, those view links will go with the rain gauges. And there's been some discussion, I know Director Ward and I have had discussion along with others about getting some, um, and then Vince and I have talked about this also, but getting some strategic rain gauge locations directly in, as we refine this recharge area, not just relying on Texas Mezzanet and others, but to adding some more rain gauges and try to really refine that recharge area up and around the west prong of the oasis. And this is, you know, the northwest or northeast part portion of the county. I think it could benefit over the next six months or so to add some additional rain gauges up in that area. And the, the Texas electronic tipping bucket stuff, that's exactly what we've had before. They're relatively inexpensive, um, and they connect right into our system and we can get those real, real time readings.
Now, the first instrument that we were talking about, um, the casing detector?
Yes, sir.
That, that, is that the instrument that Mr. Royal is, is using?
No, uh, no, um.
Different deal.
Robinson, this, yeah, all of this information, this is, this really is to complement our existing system. The monitoring portion of that agenda and item number five, that is a geophysical logging borehole monitoring program that, um, we talked about with Mr. Royal. Is Mr. Royal in the audience today?
Yes, he is. I do believe.
Perfect. Yeah. It's not high ball.
He's the only face I don't recognize, so I'm pretty sure it's him.
We all of us, no, this is Paul Royal. He left here many years ago. I don't know if you know him. Uh, come back within, stone, what, three years probably.
It's been a little longer than that.
Been longer than that. He's done a good bit of drilling throughout the county.
Yeah. And so Director, Director Robinson, the, the information that you're looking at right here, this is our, this is the standard equipment. And these are the same things that we've been doing over the years. There is a little bit of a difference in that we're asking for this well depth, the well casing detector from Soloness. And then the Off Control, additional, that's a, that's a new level of, of data collection and data monitoring regarding, uh, electrical conductivity, density, salinity and others.
Um, for targeted areas, I might add.
Yeah. But this is the thing, um, Mr. Royal and I and Vince, we talked about, and I know that I've mentioned this to you and others, the monitoring side, the geophysical logging and borehole monitoring aspect, that's, that's something new that I'd like to discuss today, but that's, that's going to be at the end of all of this. That's a, a separate item. And we've got some other information and documentation for that.
Okay. I've been beating them up, guys. Where y'all?
Where's the separate?
What y'all got for them? Well, we don't have that, but, uh, I don't know.
Just tell us about that, Jim.
Well, hang on. Well, let's, let's, let's do this, let's do this one right here because we've, we've got, we've got this one right here. So let's just do it.
Looking for a motion?
Well, I want, I want to know if anybody's got any other questions about just this one right here. What we're talking about on the equipment.
What, all the invoices or just that one?
Just this one right here. This is the one that he's gone over. This is everything that he's talked about so far is right here on this. He's gone over every line item on this deal right here.
But are we approving them all at the same time or?
I don't care if y'all want to do it that way. I'd, I'd say he finished that one. Let's just do that one. Go on right on through them.
That's fine.
But I, it's a pleasure to the board. But I just figured since we had everything that was on this and he had just talked about everything that was on this, this is the time to ask the questions about everything that's on this?
I've got no problem with it.
No. That's what I was going to look for. Does anybody get any questions about this?
It's everything we've talked about.
I don't see it in my packet.
Which, which one are you, which?
I'm looking here.
Looking at Jim.
The very last page.
Yeah. Here you are.
That one right there. Because that's the one he just, I, I messed him up. I went to the end of this presentation first.
Should be.
That's my bad.
Oh, it's different.
25 dash 04?
It's this one here.
This is the last one.
This one.
This one's the one that has everything on it.
When? That's, that's one we're paying the.
I'm not giving you the last.
One of them is for $17,600.
Right. That's a different deal.
Okay.
And we're not, this is the one we're talking about right now.
The one I don't want.
Oh, you don't have that one? Look at, look at that one. Cause that's the one that he just went over.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is the one that just went over here.
I do not miss them.
The well depth and well casing detector with accessories, the insulated equipment, which is the Off Control. The view links and the, uh, and the tipping bucket. Uh, where, where are we going to put that one? What were we talking about? Put that one in, Jim?
West prong.
West prong? Okay.
West prong. The tipping, the tipping bucket.
Oh, those are, oh, so the, the rain gauges, those, those were interested, we are fully interested in putting those up in locations in the northwest portion of the county, trying to refine some of that recharge area specifically for Lost Morris Springs. And I think the more data that we can get out there, there's a lot of algorithms that we can go, we've got a pretty good idea, but nothing beats hard data. And I, and to have four, you know, at least three, two, three or four more locations up in that area around the west prong, any area where we say maybe recharging Lost Morris, I'm interested in putting some more rain gauges up there.
Okay. So.
If there's other locations, I, you know, this is just what I'm thinking right now, but it's certainly open for discussion. If you want other locations or rain gauges in other locations, there's certain, these are relatively inexpensive. We can get these at any point. But that's, the extension of these was for that particular area.
Well, we, we had discussed that. I mean, when you look at Mezzanet and, and any of the other services where people are registering their personal weather stations at, there is a hole over there in that area. Where there's not enough data in, in the west prong drainage shed. Uh, once you get very far out of, uh, Edwards County, there's just nothing in there. There, there are no, there are no personal weather stations in there. We just don't have any data coming down through that drainage.
Uh, Vince, are you all? Vince?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you, do you have any input on any of this stuff? Do you, do you look for anything additional that you might need or anything?
Uh, I, I think all this is great and it's all steps in the right direction. I think, I think Jim's recommendation of put some additional rain gauges up there in the west prong, that's exactly what we need. I think something in, in the future, maybe, maybe something that is more specific to flow through that. But a good place to start is getting some additional rain gauges up there. Um, as it relates to the other instruments, the equipment that Jim's proposing, I, I think it's all needed. I think it's going to help us refine our understanding of well completion intervals across the county, which ultimately at the end of the day, that helps us better understand what's connected to what, who's connected to who. Kind of all of the above as it relates to those questions that keep circulating. So, uh, full support for, for all of these, um, recommendations.
Okay. Um, I've got no problem listening to the rest of them, uh, first, and we just do a one vote on the whole thing. If that's what y'all want to do. But we got that one cleared. Mr. Burton, I'm, I'm not going to ask any more questions to screw you up and get you to the end of your presentation. Before you start the beginning, I'm just going to let you roll with the other two and then we'll go, then we'll go at the end.
Can I, can I just ask a question? So what, when you say the other two, do you, do you have another invoice from EcoKite? Is that just my normal monthly, uh, September invoice that you're looking at or what? Remind, I've got the equipment here.
I've got, I've got the equipment. Are, are we, are we taking up anything else now other than that one?
I haven't heard, I haven't heard back from Greg. I think, I think that we can safely do this.
Okay. We're, we're good to do the equipment. I think the other two, the other ones that I have, we may not, but, uh, I want to.
Date at 9:20, Jim. That, uh, monthly invoice?
Well, the question was whether or not the posting was sufficient to take that one up. Which we can do that at the next, we can do that at the next meeting. We're going to get it paid. But I don't know that our posting on the agenda, but, uh, we also, we also had the recommendation in, in regarding Mr. Royal, which I don't know if we can take that up, uh, as far as the district paying part of it tonight, but I would like to know more about the instrumentation and that, that was the other thing that you were going to talk about was, uh, geophysical logging.
And Director Shaw, uh, I see, so the other, the other invoice that you got from 9:20, that's just a, that's EcoKite invoice for my time, um, and for August and September for my normal, whatever we did. Um, I could read this here if you go through it.
We probably.
Oh, that's not necessary. I was just asking if that was something we needed to consider.
Yeah. Unless somebody has questions about that. I, I think the crux of, of tonight or this afternoon for me to this evening for y'all, um, is really to talk about this monitoring program, this geophysical borehole monitoring program that we've been talking about for a while. And it's all, it's really come to a head. I don't know, come to a head, but it's come to the surface here recently over the last month or so. And I think my conversations with Mr. Royal, and this goes back maybe about a year ago. Um, I talked with, um, Mr. Faust's grandson, Logan. And they were doing, so they're going to do some work on some Faust property. And he asked me about doing some geophysical logging. I said, I thought it was a great idea. It would be beneficial to the district. And recently, Mr. Royal reached out and provided those logs to us. And I think both Vince and I had looked at him and said, that these are fantastic. And this is information that can be very relevant. And again, it's another tool in the toolbox to help us really understand, um, where the top of each of these aquifers are, the bottom of the aquifers, where things change. And, um, I know I was, I was fortunate. I did have a conversation with Mr. Shaw. And we were just talking about what geophysical logging are, why is it important? And, um, a geophysical log is essentially, you've got a couple of different components and Paul can get into this or Vince can, can chime in here, but you've got a gamma, you've got a gamma log. You're looking at rate, uh, radioactivity. You've got, uh, spontaneous potential or voltage spontaneous potential. You've got short normal loss resistivity. And essentially it's an instrument that goes down into the well, sends out signals into the geologic formation and gives you a bunch of squiggly lines and multi colors. And, you know, and it's, it's not necessarily intuitive, but it can give you some very good information about what rocks are permeable, what rocks are not permeable, whether it's freshwater, whether it's not freshwater, whether there's, you know, again, this, this can provide some information about whether or not there's a casing. And the good thing about, uh, gamma, gamma logs is they can actually go through the steel casing. Um, even if they're, you know, if it was case. But again, what it, what this does is the, the two wells that are included in here that Mr. Royal provided are two wells on the Faust property. These are permitted wells that are not being used. And they weren't being used. They are now, or they're about to be. Um, but 1601 and 1602, I believe. But they went down 900 feet. And you send these signals down the well and you can tell, hey, this is this formation. And then, hey, the formation changed and, and hey, we've got a real high permeable zone in this area. And this information coupled with the geology work that Vince has completed for us, coupled together is just, is, is very beneficial. Um, I'd say priceless, but we're about to put a price on it. Um, information that, that we can use to try to see what's connected and what's not. And I think a lot of this, a lot of the questions, you know, is what's happening? What you go south of 90? The dip, the Edward starts to dip quite a bit. We've got the, the Del Rio clays in there. You've got some Buddha shale. You've got the Austin chalk and Essigs are dipping. As you look at the spatial distribution of what the geo, geologic formation is doing, it's changing. And so the idea would be that we would embark on a geophysical logging and monitoring program over the next several months and, and, uh, and identify, um, you know, 10 to 15, I think would be minimum, 10 to 15 locations where we can get very accurate aquifer characteristics, characteristics, properties, understand the lithology, um, and see what is connected to what. And so again, all of this is just a, this is just another mechanism in order for us to be able to determine what's, what's permeable and what's not. And to help that make, make that determination about what's connected to Lost Morris and what's connected to other springs potentially, pencil springs, mud springs. Um, but again, another tool in the toolbox. And I don't know, I don't know if that answered your question that describes it enough. If Vince wants to chime in or somebody's got some specific questions or people.
I want to. I want to, I want to dumb it down for five seconds.
Okay.
Uh, if I'm understanding you correctly. All right. But you, by doing the geophysical logs on the individual wells, we're going to be able to determine the underground topography of the various formations at the depth in those holes. All right. Plane geometry, if you take that off in any linear direction for a few other holes, you're going to have the idea of what those are doing, whether they're dipping to the west, whether they're uprising, what they're doing, the information that we don't have right now because we don't have seismographs throughout Kenny County. This is how we're going to piece together the puzzle of what's really going on underneath the ground by getting the geophysical logs on the holes that have already been punched into it.
Right.
And by targeting the areas where we think there's something going on.
Right. And I, I would just add that Vince has already done a tremendous amount of work looking at existing logs and things that have already been done. And even, and looking at, looking at those and then, you know, putting the geology, the geologic work that was done, you know, while he was, you know, at a different firm, working with Dr. Hutchinson is just absolutely, it's just, it's been a game changer for us just in terms of understanding. Dr. Bill had three layers of geology and three geologic things that he was trying to put a model to. Vince came in and found nine separate units or I think we've narrowed it down to seven. But identifying some of those target areas and some areas where we've got some missing information that can help pull this together. And I think that's where we are right now. This is not a program that we would have wanted to start two years ago. You want your geologic information first. You want to look and see what information is readily available. And then you look and see, okay, where could we use some additional information? Or are there some additional points of question that we need to confirm? I know the information behind the fort at the Pratt property, the water discussion about that yesterday. Well, you, you know, we've, we've got some existing stuff that we've taken in the Austin, but are there some other things to do? I think, I see Vince turned on his, his monitor there. And I don't know, Vince, if you want to chime in here a little bit?
The object.
Director Robinson, if I.
The object is to go get.
Join us?
The object is to go get puzzle pieces that you don't have. You're going to go get all the ones that you got first and then figure out where you need to go get the, the rest of them out. And that's, that's prudent. That way you're not doubling up on something you already got.
That's, that's exactly it. That's exactly it. And it took, it took someone like Vince to come in and do all of that first to see where the holes are. And then in conversations with Mr. Royal and seeing the information we just got, my pivot was this is what the district needs to do. We, we are now in a position to be able to do this, embark on a program, let's get some very clearly defined connectivity between these locations. Um, and it's where we are right now. And again, for discussion with the board.
Well, sounds good to me. This is the kind of information that we need. This is how we're ultimately going to figure out the rest of the puzzle of where the water is going, coming from and going to. You got any guys, any guys got any question about all those squiggly lines and what they mean? You got any guys, any guys got any question about all those squiggly lines and what they mean?
Well, I got, uh, I'm already ready to make a motion.
Yeah. Sounds very interesting. Sounds like it's vital to what we're trying to.
Yep.
Our knowledge.
Okay. What y'all wanna do? What's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, I'm like, like, you got? We'll leave you out of it. You're being quiet.
So we'll be making a motion on.
I'll approve both of them.
Both of them.
To approve both because you're, you don't, your, your item on your agenda doesn't specify one or the other. All it does is it's just a general statement. So I'm gonna say that, oh, we approved both.
Well, you're talking about proving this and proving this monthly, or are you talking about the offsetting the cost? Because this is, you know where that's at, right? So this one's over in this one. Right? This is separate. This is in regards to.
Yeah, this.
Holy guns. Yeah. That's in regards to this and it's, I don't know, it's in the recommendation, but I don't think we can take this up right now. I think that's gonna have to be taken up after we talking to Greg about it to see if we can use uh, tax funds to offset those costs or not. Okay. But those two, I think you probably do.
But you wanna do about those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, approve the EcoKai uh, invoices. Invoice, uh, KCG01 dash 2505 and KCG02 dash 2504. The first one's for the amount of $17,652.34. The second is for $19,568.92.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any, any additional discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. All at the same time, motion carries unanimously. Okay. You getting your new toys, Mr. Burton?
I would, I would say we're getting, we're getting tools that can help us answer the questions.
Well, I feel, I, I feel like a kid that got new toys because I know that, I know that we need that information here. And, uh,
No, it, we can't have, I mean, obviously all of that stuff, all that equipment will be sitting in the, in the groundwater office, but I definitely think it's up. We're gonna, that we're gonna, uh, certainly that we can use.
It'll allow us to, it'll allow us to figure out what's going on and that's what we gotta do.
Absolutely.
Right. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it, gentlemen, as far as what I've got on here.
We can't take up any future agenda on track because it's not on the agenda.
No, and I, I don't know. Greg and I are gonna have to talk about that. That one didn't wind up on here. And to be completely honest with you, uh, my interpretation was that that was only at regular meetings. It wasn't at every meeting. But I, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, it needs to be on every meeting. We're gonna put it on everyone. I try. Uh, if it's everyone, it's everyone. So it doesn't matter to me. Uh, I, I just misunderstood it. Um, but I didn't, and I didn't catch it not being on here, but I would have if I'd have known it's supposed to be on every meeting. It's supposed to be on every meeting. We're gonna have another meeting. For the girls, in a minute. Okay. Uh, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.